Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the February 24th Tuolton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have the honor of having an Eagle Scout who would be recognized later on, but our Eagle Scout Jonathan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, Jonathan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That brings us to announcements, and we have two exciting announcements tonight. Our first announcement is a new employee introduction. It's our new Parks and Recreation Director Dustin Scholl. He's wearing her suit and everything. Wow.
I know, I know.
That won't last long.
First week, you know. Mayor Bubnik and members of the City Council, it is truly my pleasure, I'm Sherilyn Lambos, still your city manager, from the first presentation is what I meant, it's my pleasure to introduce Tuolton's newest employee, our new Parks and Recreation Director Dustin Scholl. So Dustin's first day was last Tuesday, February 18th, and he has hit the ground running. So Dustin comes to us from the city of Wilsonville, where he worked for just under six years as their park supervisor overseeing operations and maintenance, development of new parks, and coordination with recreation, among many other responsibilities. When talking to Dustin's boss and coworkers in Wilsonville during the reference check process, I heard so many glowing remarks, including that he is innovative, passionate, and intelligent, balanced with interpersonal skills, compassion, and a deep dedication to public service. As you know, this is a very important position in our organization and community, and I know that Dustin is up to the job. He is a relationship builder and a strategic thinker, both of which are vitally important here in leading the department, working with the community, and representing Tuolton. So I know you will join me in welcoming Dustin to this position.
Welcome Dustin.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Well, I, oh. I'm fairly confident they're applauding your speech. Yeah, Mayor Bubnik and member of councils, it's absolutely my privilege to be here, to work with the excellent team here in Tuolton, and to serve the incredible community of Tuolton. The support from council and the community for the Parks and Recreation Team, as well as, you know, the entirety of the city is apparent from my chair now and from my time in Wilsonville. Just excited to continue to do all the great work. There's a lot to get done, a lot to deliver on, and the community is certainly deserving of all of it. So my privilege to be here, and when you have questions, I'll feel them, so.
All right. I want to welcome to the city of Tuolton, very much appreciate you joining the team. Parks and Recreation and library are two most exposed, if you will, departments that people very much enjoy and have very high expectations. You're inheriting a plan from, you know, Ross Hoover from before you, of, you know, employing the bond measure, doing maintenance on the parks, you know, bringing new parks online. So your hands, I know, will be full and be very busy.
Yes.
And I appreciate you, you know, stepping up and taking on the task, because you'll probably hear from a lot of us, all of us, a lot, and most typically positive, every once in a while we'll get a negative comment, we'll pass it on. But people here in the community love their parks, love their library. You're going to be the face of Parks and Rec, and just welcome to Tuolton.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm glad we got you away from Wilsonville.
Good steal.
All right. Any questions or comments for Dustin? Counselor President Pratt.
My two grandkids live in Wilsonville, and you have an excellent, they have an excellent program there, so I'm glad we got here.
All right. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have a furry introduction. So our next introduction is for our new police canine Boone. His handler Eli. And Sergeant French is here, too.
Well, we'll see how this goes. So, good evening, Mayor. Like I said, yeah, this goes.
He likes to jump on tables.
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited tonight to introduce you to the newest member of the Tuolton Police Department, Canine Boone. So Canine Boone is a German Shepherd that was born on December 20th, 2022, in Slovakia. He was imported to Adlerhorst International, which is a kennel in Southern California, in 2024, and he was tested by the Oregon Police Canine Association Master Patrol Dog Trainer, and felt that Boone would have been a good addition to the Tuolton Police Department. So in August, we were fortunate enough to make a purchase of Boone and have him flown up here, where he became a resident of Oregon. So Eli, or Boone is assigned to Officer Eli Foltz, and I do want to say that this program is truly the work of Officer Foltz and Sergeant French in the back of the room. So they are the ones that put all the work into the program itself, getting the program off the ground and securing Boone for us. So Officer Eli and Boone have attended a 360-hour basic patrol dog school.
Wow.
And passed with flying colors. Actually, just a side note on that, in the middle of that, Boone had a little medical issue and ended up having to have surgery, and had about a week, week and a half delay in his training, but actually was able to catch right back up and finish with the rest of his class, because he's really good at what he does. So, and in December of 2024, Boone and Eli were certified by the Oregon Police Canine Association as a dog handler team. So his primary function is to augment patrol through, as a locating tool, and in the detection of human odor, both human and articles that humans have touched. So we would just like to say welcome to Boone, and we're excited to have him on board.
All right. Eli, so we'd like to be a handler, let people know what your role is as the handler for Boone.
Sure. Primarily, it's just trying to keep up with him. As you can see, he's like kind of a, he's a little bit of a loose cannon at times, but he's a, he's been a ton of fun. Like Chief said, we did a pretty extensive training course, and now we're just kind of out on the, on the road, and we'll respond when there's a need for a canine, otherwise we're kind of just doing normal patrol stuff together. But he lives at home with me, and definitely been a lot of fun, been the best thing I've done so far. But, yeah, it's been a blast. It's a lot of fun, lots to learn, but it's been great.
So he's, Boone's already out doing his thing with you?
Yeah. Yeah, we finished school at the end of December, and then we were on the road for just a couple weeks, then I ended up, well, not ended up, I had a kid, so I've been off for, I'm like the mother too, just surprised, you know.
A kid and a dog?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just kind of now getting back to the road, so we're kind of hoping to hit stuff full steam ahead now that I'm back, so.
All right. Any questions?
How old is he again?
He just turned two in December.
Oh my gosh.
So still kind of a puppy.
Counselor Brooks.
I was curious, I know that we're one of the only cities that has a police dog. Do other cities borrow our services if they need those types of services?
Yeah, so several agencies around have dogs, and so they're, Eli is on a countywide paging system, so if he's not, if another dog in another jurisdiction is not working, Eli would move around the, not only the Washington County, but some, into the somewhere in the Clackamas County area to assist with dog work if they need it. So it's truly a regional asset for us.
Great. Thanks for being a leader in the whole county.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Get Sergeant French to get that last photo in. Well, thanks for coming tonight, and will, will he be joined with other police dogs for National Night Out, all the good stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yep, for sure.
So more of the community can see him?
Yeah, and again, that was part of our selection process, is we wanted to make sure we had a dog that was community friendly at the same time. So he does have an on and off switch, which is pretty impressive for these dogs, so when it's time to go to work, he works, but other times, he's a dog that you can pet, when Eli lets you.
But no, he'll be, he'll be around as much as we're able to be, for sure.
Great. Well, thanks for coming tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to a public comment. Public comment, it's an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments limited to about three minutes. I'll take those folks who are signed up in person first, then folks who are not signed up, you don't have to be in person, then we'll go out to Zoom and get those folks who would like to provide comment. So I've got a list of folks already who signed up. First is Chris Paul. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Chris Paul. I am a co-chair of the IDEA Advisory Committee. You may remember me from a few meetings ago. Through my work on the IDEA Committee, I have witnessed the passion that our mayor, city council, and the city staff display in creating an inclusive, welcoming community in which everyone has an opportunity to thrive. As a Tuolton resident, I am proud to live in a place where I know that my neighbors care about each other and work together to make sure that everyone can feel welcome, supported, and, most importantly, safe. Right now, there is a part of our community that needs support. Some of our neighbors, who happen to be transgender or non-binary, are now living each day with great uncertainty. They are subject to bullying, harassment, and dehumanization, even from very powerful and influential people. Our neighbors are enduring challenges and trials for simply wishing to live authentically. Their lives have been upended by a political system that seeks to reduce their identity to that of an abstract issue. But trans people are not just an issue, they are real people, our neighbors, deserving of respect, safety, and celebration of their contributions. It is our responsibility as a community to step up and let them know that they are supported. For this reason, the IDEA Committee has recommended that the City Council issue a proclamation declaring March 31st, 2025, as Transgender Day of Visibility. This day will be honored around the world as an opportunity to celebrate all that transgender and non-binary people continue to contribute to humanity. Tuolton has an opportunity to join with those voices and let the world know that our city supports our transgender and non-binary friends. This is a chance to demonstrate that Tuolton stands firm in its commitment to the values of diversity and inclusion. I strongly urge the City Council to support this proclamation, and I remain committed to supporting and celebrating all of my neighbors for who they are. Thank you.
Next up, I have Dr. Valerie Holt. A hot, oh, it's Valerie Holt, yeah. As soon as I saw your face, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Sorry to be here again.
It's okay. Nobody's to be sorry.
Evening, everybody. Approximately 11 million people were murdered during the Holocaust. That's more than the entire population of Oregon and Washington states combined. And yet, when I read that number, what strikes me most is that we really don't know for certain how many people were murdered, because those in power were so prolific at erasure. There's a poem on display at the Holocaust Museum that reads, "First they came for the communists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." Understandably, time has not been kind to the citizens of Germany during this period, often asking why people stood by or knowingly allowed such atrocities to occur. Thankfully, the world intervened when ordinary citizens would not, and defeated those who fancied themselves above consequence. My grandfather, at just 16 years old, emancipated himself from his parents to enlist in the army. His efforts and the ultimate sacrifice of over 407,000 American servicemen helped to define the greatest generation with values such as bravery, selflessness, and determination. An entire generation, an entire country, united and willing to sacrifice everything to defeat evil. How ashamed those people would be, knowing that they risked life and limb overseas just for us to open the door and roll out the red carpet for fascism here at home. The domestic terrorists of the alt-right often leverage the term fragile masculinity as an insult to liberals. But how fragile must one's masculinity be to feel threatened by a boy wearing a dress or a girl taking testosterone shots? If a college student playing volleyball against someone who previously had a penis is more terrifying to you than a convicted rapist dictating decisions about healthcare for your mothers, wives, sisters, and daughters, then your fight was never about morality or religious beliefs. No one has ever been murdered by a pronoun in the entire existence of humanity. The same cannot be said of toxic masculinity or religious extremism. Further, if archaic conceptions of gender roles are what you seek, where women are subservient to men and only exist to bear and raise children, join the Taliban. But in a country that affords you the right to mask your homophobia and racism on social media via your conspiracy theory posts and Fox fake news retweets, you will not trample on the rights of others to express themselves or their gender identity. The First Amendment does not come at the expense of tax breaks. Decency and humanity are not voided by flying a Trump flag. We are a nation founded on freedom from religious persecution, and we cannot allow individuals who are unable to follow their own Ten Commandments to polarize our moral compass. We are here today to unequivocally declare that every American life deserves respect, and that protecting our equitable access to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is the right and responsibility of every American. Approximately 11 million people. They have already come for the immigrants, and now they are coming for the trans community. Who among us will be next? Like my grandfather, I refuse to sit by while injustice, ignorance, and hatred trample virtue. I am here tonight to stand in solidarity with the trans community and to fight for every trans person to be seen. You cannot and will not be reduced to a statistic on a future Wikipedia page, not while the blood of true patriots runs through my veins. History will surely not look back on us as one of the greatest generations, but I would implore this council to do its part to spare us from being remembered as one of the worst. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Emily. I'm a trans woman. I have lived in Tuolton for more than half of my life, and I'm very afraid right now, but I wanted to come to talk to you today about the idea of the Transgender Day of Visibility, because there are definitely people in this country who think that it's the idea of trans people being visible, being members of our community, being loved and respected, is antithetical to their values, and they've abolished the federal Transgender Day of Visibility. But I think that idea of visibility is very powerful, even though we have National Talk Like a Pirate Day and National Eat an Apple Day. The idea of visibility stands for a lot more than some of the small holidays, small civic holidays that we respect. It's very difficult to hate someone who you know, has a person, someone who you love and respect. It's very difficult to say that as an abstract that person is an enemy to you, or opposed to your way of life, or has anything that they wish to do damage to you, to your values. And it's very easy to love someone who you do know. It's easy to love someone whose values you respect, and whose way of life you're familiar with, and who you get along with and are in community with. And that's why I really think that it's important that we honor the Transgender Day of Visibility, because it's hard as a trans person right now to speak up and be seen. It's hard to know whether you're going to be welcome, whether you're going to be welcome in public facilities and public housing, whether you're going to be allowed into the bathroom, whether you're going to be harassed. And I think it's vital that we stand up as a community and say that we don't tolerate that kind of treatment, that we don't want people excluded on the basis of how they see themselves and what kind of medical treatment they need. And I would very much like for Tuolton to be that kind of community, because I still live here, and I still intend to make it home here. So thank you very much for your time.
Next up is Kit Lorleide. Welcome, Kit.
Hello. You know, I was gonna write a speech, but honestly, I'm a person, and I just want to talk to you person to person. Life's hard right now. It just is. You know, my kid's getting bullied, who's also trans. As a trans, non-binary person, I have people call me it. Yesterday, I got to witness, at my workplace, a trans woman harassed twice, with people telling them, "Oh, you're disgraced, your mother, and we won, and we can discriminate against you now." Also oddly, that they loved them, that Jesus loved them, but that's neither here nor there. So, yeah, it's hard. Right now, I don't even know if I can leave the country. I just applied for my passport, and they cashed the check, but who knows if it'll come back to me, because right now they're pausing all of those on a federal level. And I know this seems like a small thing, like, we're just making a proclamation in a tiny little town in the middle of Oregon, right? But the fact is, this is everything to the people like me. I've always felt supported by this city, but that's because I'm in the middle of the city. I see the hard work that you do every day to support every citizen of this city. And not everybody gets that access. Everybody even sees, you know, they don't have time to watch city council meetings, they don't have time to listen to grandiose speeches. So this is just one small way to reconfirm and show that we are not complacent in the face of what's going on right now. It just makes us feel just that more little, more welcome. And I know, I know what some of the things that are going to be said, is that this is not, you know, this is against some people's belief. But I have one thing to say to that. I'm not Santa Claus. If you stop believing in me, I don't stop existing. I'm still here, I'm still a citizen, and one that has contributed a lot to this community. So please, please, pass this proclamation for us and for the larger community. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Emma Gray.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Emma Gray, and I have been a resident of Tuolton for over 25 years. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on an issue incredibly important to me and to many in our community. I am here tonight to state my unequivocal support of the Transgender Day of Visibility proclamation. Many have already noted the reality of transgender people in this country, our state, and our city. Honestly, I don't think very many people out there truly do not believe in the existence of transgender people. But the more troubling issue for me is the growing sentiment among some that seem to purport that transgender people shouldn't be allowed to exist, that their humanity is somehow less than, or that their right to live happy and fulfilled lives should be as commonplace and defensible as the right is for any other human. And to those people, I say, how dare you? Transgender Day of Visibility is a way for us in Tuolton, as a loving and caring community, to say to a group of people currently facing terrifying prejudice that they are seen, and that their humanity is seen, that they have as much right to thrive in our city and feel safe as any resident of Tuolton, because they do. I believe this proclamation has never been more important and timely, because the alternative to visibility right now is erasure. And make no mistake, erasure is not benign, it is not ignoring or a lack of acknowledgement. In our active erasure of transgender people, we have also communicated that they shouldn't be visible, that they shouldn't feel safe, that they shouldn't be active participants in our communities, and that they don't deserve the rights and freedoms that frankly are the bedrock of what makes me proud to be an American, and I find that morally repugnant. I refuse to accept that I live in a country or city where this reality is seen as anything other than shameful and a true failure of the promise of America to her people. In my 25 years as a resident of Tuolton, I have seen countless examples of our elected officials and representatives making safety and inclusion for our community a priority. We have made clear time and time again that we want our community to be a loving and welcoming place, and I thank all of you here for the work that I have seen, extensive work, consistent work. Thank you for making that happen. It makes me proud to call Tuolton home, so let's continue that culture of care. I wholeheartedly reject any attempts at erasure of transgender people, and I invite you all to reject it as well in strong and unwavering voices, even though mine is wavering a little. A proclamation marking Transgender Day of Visibility will not make the harm that has been and continues to be done go away, but it is a very good start. Thank you so much for your time.
So that is, that's all the folks that had, that were signed up. Again, you don't have to be signed up. Would anyone else like to approach the desk and address the council, an item that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Come on up.
I'll go up with you.
Just go ahead and just introduce yourself, please.
Sorry, what was that?
Just introduce yourself, your name.
My name's Shreez Basquez.
And my name's Eric Basquez.
Yeah, we would also just like to ask everybody here for your support for having Transgender Day of Visibility. We had to move here from Arizona a few years ago, and it was a really tough decision to leave our home, and we had to for a lot of safety reasons, and Oregon was one of our top choices, because it is such a supportive environment. It's hard to leave the place that, that's where I was born. It was really tough to make that choice. It meant so much to me when I came here and saw the Pride Stride event. It meant a lot to be able to just see that this was such an amazing and supportive community. And by this, this council, if you pass the Transgender Day of Visibility, it goes just such far away in continuing to show that support in a time that is so stressful for us. So thank you all for everything you do and for having us tonight.
Yeah, to add on to that, Shreez is an occupational therapist in this community. I teach in Tiger Tuolton School District. We are closely connected to so many people, including our own child, that is, that, you know, that needs the love, care, and attention, because there are so many challenges that they're facing right now, and the big one right now is what everybody's talking about, you know? So just for the benefit of all community members to see that we are all in alignment and support, it would absolutely mean the world to us. Even though we've been here for only four years, we've not been here for 20, 25 years, but we call this place our home, and we love it here, and we love people who are neighbors with us, and we just would love to have that support from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the meeting who would like to provide comment? We have anyone in Zoom?
Oh, great.
Anyone in Zoom?
Nobody's raised their hand.
Give them a couple seconds more to raise their hand if they want to. Nothing? All right. So thank you for all the comments. I'm sure Counselor Sacco will be following up on this later tonight. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, are those items considered routine, and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight? Tonight's consent agenda is, consists of four items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of February 10th, 2025. Item number two, consideration of approval of liquor license renewals for 2025. Item three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Century Hotel. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution number 5869-25 to exempt specific affordable housing developments from property taxes. Would any member of the council like an item pulled from the consent and heard later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any comments on those motions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Brings us to special reports, and...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I think Counselor Sacco wanted to, wants to say something.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering if we could break protocol, Mayor, and since we have all these folks here, if we could take a vote on the proclamation instead of doing it at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can move up council communication until now.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So, can I start?
Yes, you can.
I didn't want to assume, but, so, I would like to propose to the council that on the May 24th meeting, that we have a pro, March, thank you, 24th meeting, that we bring forward the proclamation for Transgender Day of Visibility, and that it is on... the proclamation for Transgender Day of Visibility, and that it is on the March 24th meeting, but also on our regular calendar moving forward. So I'm wondering if we have support for this proclamation.
Counselor Brooks and Counsel President Pratt.
I want to thank you for bringing this to us tonight, and thank everybody that commented. I am in full support of this. And I just want to say, as a therapist, I moved here to Oregon, now it's been a long time, a long time ago, I had a different kind of caseload and started learning more about the transgender community as I worked with people in the community who had moved here from other places where they didn't feel safe, and also saw a lot of people from, it's one, it's remarkable to me because generationally, it's one of the biggest gaps in how people feel about themselves and present themselves that I've ever seen. So I would see people that were maybe 10 years older than me and that were very, very closeted, that were very, very nervous all the time, that, that had the impacts of living like in the closet and feared for their lives all the time, every day, and then people that had just started coming out.
Zoe, let's go outside, Zoe.
And then, and then the young people who are, have come together with such great community, so I just want to say that we see you and that I support visibility and humanity for every single person in our community. When we put that in our values, we really meant it. And if anybody wants to talk further about that or has other things they want to talk about, I'm very open to your communication and ways that you would like to step forward in our community.
I just wanted to add to that, that I remember last year at the Pride Stride, a student spoke up and it still makes me want to cry, and they spoke to the fact that just because of the way they identify, they get taxed and there's some acronym for it that says, why don't you kill yourself now? And this is our community, I think, oh, we're so welcoming. So, I mean, this is just one more little thing we could do to really make a statement about what we stand for.
Counselor Hillier.
Thank you. I'm in full support of this, and I have the opportunity to work with a lot of youth in our community, and I know that whether you're part of the LGBTQIA+ community or not, this weighs heavily on what's happening in our schools, in our community, and I think it's an onus on all of us to find ways to better educate ourselves, to better support the people that we know and love, and certainly from this, this position, that we should be doing everything we can to make this community better for everyone. So I'm in full support, thank you.
Other comments? So I see there's already four votes. So by a show of hands, can I see who'd be in favor of adding this to our March 24th agenda for the proclamation review? I assume the, the text of the proclamation would be sent, and we'll get the whole review for the 24th and we'll vote on it, and then if it does get passed and accepted, that will
We would need to vote...
To adopt it on the 24th or...
Yeah, for the 20, no, it would need to be read on the 24th. We don't have a meeting on the 10th, so this is kind of speeding up the process to have the proclamation come before the, to read it on the 24th.
Okay, sounds good. All right. All those in favor, raise your hands. Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's six to one, so we'll put it on the agenda. All right. This is kind of weird, any other council communications?
Sorry, I didn't say that.
Was that abstention or no? So no, yeah. So circling back, so we, I gotta remember, we did council communications. We'll come back to special reports, we have an Eagles...
Are we doing special council communication now?
Yes, now, yep.
So we're gonna do the whole, like, general, I'm sorry, I'm...
The council communications we usually have to get in a city council meeting. Yeah. We just, that's the last item we usually have. Counselor Hillier.
So we don't CC, CCAA yet, or...
Oh, that's later, that's later in the agenda. Counselor Hillier.
So part of council communications, yay, okay. So I just want to remind folks that March 3rd is the registration date for the summer camps for our Parks Department, and also Safety Town registration's happening for our second year. We're hosting students K through, Tuolton Together is hosting students K through two, as well as third through fifth. We're still looking for council, Tuolton Together is still looking for counselors, so register for camps. The city may be also looking for counselors, I don't know, but you should check out the city's website.
And our council communications. Counselor Brooks.
I just want to communicate just an update. Some of us will be going to the National League of Cities Conference in DC to advocate for our city. There's several committees on the, that's, people serve on, and I just want to let people know that I was appointed to the Community and Economic Development Legislative Priorities Committee, as well as the Inner Ring Suburbs Committee. They're a little bit different styles of committees. I also want to thank everybody that's coming to that event, and then, just like an else, well, I think that's enough, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, now we'll circle back to special reports. Special report number one, Eagle Scout presentation by Jonathan Ayers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you just said, my name is Jonathan Ayers, and over the summer I worked on an Eagle Scout project. So for those of you guys who don't know what that is, within BSA or Boy Scout organization, if you want to earn the highest rank of Eagle and what like exemplifies all of their, the qualities of an Eagle Scout, you have to complete a project, or you get to complete a project where you benefit your community in some way. So I wanted my Eagle Scout project to be something that I really believed in and that you can get behind, because I think that if you're gonna put all this effort into a project, that you should like be benefiting people and actually helping them in some way. So within our city and just larger nation, I realized that homelessness was an issue, and most shelters sometimes discriminate between families and like age and gender. So I wanted to partner with Family Promise, which is a organization within our community. They're stationed in Tiger, they have a hotel, and they believe in just like getting families better economic situations and kind of stabilizing them, helping them stand on their own. They house 63 families within our communities in their hotel, so that's really amazing. So for them, I built a 12 by 14 storage shed to clear space from rooms, because they were doing lots of renovation. If you've been down there, I know the mayor is related to them, so he's seen that there's lots of renovations going on and rooms were being completely filled up with just normal hotel supplies. So I took it upon myself to build, as you can see in the photos, the storage shed, to try to clear up some of those rooms and directly help them get more space for families and help more families be benefited by the program. So this summer I spent 86 hours working on planning and building the actual shed, and within my troop and my 11 volunteers, we spent a collective 270 hours completing this. We raised over $5,900 for the shed through grants and other donations, and from start to finish, it was only 58 days to build. So it was pretty great how the community came together and just helped me and supported me, and now there's an amazing space that others can benefit from. So thank you for your time.
So can you point out what's significant, having spent a lot of time there, on the left side, the pre-existing look of the side of the hotel, or now the transient living facility, that Jonathan cleaned up, look at the before and after pictures, it was, it's night and day. What he did, I mean, to clean up alone probably took a lot, a long time, and then to get the shelter, the shed in there, once it's cleaned up, was probably significant, so I just want to point that out, and they are using it, and they're trying to get stuff out of rooms so they can use the rooms versus using them in the storage areas. Is anyone having questions for Jonathan?
Did you have to go through the permitting process?
No, luckily, there was not. One story, not enough square space, so luckily, we're able to just throw it down.
Smart move.
Those pesky folks in Tiger. Other questions? Counselor Brooks.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate your leadership and ingenuity on this and looking and seeing a need in the community and filling it and being a leader with your team, and it's just really inspiring, and I too think that it's really important to do things that are meaningful in our lives. So, sounds like the Scouts are doing well with you.
Thank you.
Other questions? And before, and Jonathan came up, and you're 16?
I am, yes.
Yeah, so at 16, he's an Eagle Scout already. And you did it in five years?
Ish, I don't know.
Five-ish, yeah. So that's pretty good. Counselor Hillier.
I would just like to say also thank you to your support system, because we know that trusted adults in our youth lives are like the most important protective factor that we can have. So thank you to the support system that goes around you and those that you'll influence as you move forward. I don't know if you get to be an advisor now to future Eagle Scouts or how that works, but it's really exciting for you to get to pay that forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got a certificate of appreciation, I'll come around the front of the table. If your parents want to take pictures, or they want to be in the pictures.
Should I stand up, or how, how does this work?
Let's get one of you to the most right. Oh, you guys aren't... Don't worry.
So our next special report is our outside agency grant warty, Meals on Wheels People. Are you Bee?
I am Bee.
Welcome Bee. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, well, it was worth it. Hello, my name is Bee, my pronouns are she/her. I'm the grants manager at Meals on Wheels People. Thank you so much for the funding for our Tuoltoned program. And, there, yes. Vaguely remember a lot of you from whenever I was here last time, there's no way to know. Time is an illusion. So yes, Meals on Wheels, I like to think most folks know what Meals on Wheels is, but I have an anecdote that I love to tell now. I was like getting my phone fixed or something, and someone asked me, where do you work? And I said Meals on Wheels, and he goes, what is that, a food cart? It was like, oh, okay. So not everyone necessarily knows, but for the most part, I do like to assume that everyone has some sort of connection to the program, whether it's, you know, a parent that may have received services, or you volunteered, your parent may have dragged you to volunteer, those sort of things, which we love to hear, and that's how we keep our program going. So our mission is to enrich the lives of seniors, assist them in maintaining independence by providing nutritious foods, human connections and social support. We also use our expertise to serve other nutritionally at-risk populations. And with that, so like I said, most folks know the traditional senior model, but we also serve other programs we have, or other populations. We have our Meals for Kids program, which is families with children who are up to age 18, and with them, they typically get raw foods, so like rice and beans, that sort of thing, so that they can, if they have the capability in the home to make the meals, it gives them the opportunity to do that. And then we also have our medically tailored meals program, which is for those with chronic illness, discharging for the hospital, that's available for all ages, and that with those, those can be meals tailored to folks to help them treat whatever that illness may be. But at the heart of it, our mission is seniors supporting seniors. No seniors will go hungry or experience social isolation. So we have been around since 1970, like we're, we're pretty old. But when we started, it was just these three lovely ladies delivering meals on paper plates, like covered in foil, to about a dozen seniors, I think the, it was actually like 14 seniors. And now we've grown to what we serve now, which is the tri-county area and so many more folks who are touched by our services and, and all that we do. So our main services are the traditional, the home meal delivery, that's what most people know us for, receiving meals at your doorstep, by a volunteer, making that connection. We also, our volunteers also kind of check on our participants to make sure everything is good. So like something we don't do is we don't leave the meal just at the door, like we need to hand it off to a person. That is very important because you never know what someone might be going through, especially because so many of our folks are, live alone and may not have other folks coming to visit them. We, another big part of our mission is the social connection aspect, so you have that with your volunteer, but then we also have congregate dining, which happens at One Need a Pool over here. We have the folks who are dropping it off and they make that, that connection, was just chatting with them when they're dropping off their meals. And then we have programs like Friendly Chats, which is just folks calling up and talking on the phone about whatever they talk about. It's a lot of knitting, not only, but that's the story that I always get, is folks like to talk about knitting, and I love that. And then we also have technology training, just as a way of helping people use their smartphones, because for some of us, it's intuitive, and for some folks, it's not. So it gives us a chance to like, this is how you use it, this is how you can make those digital connections, which are so important, especially in this day and age, you can't really, I wouldn't have gotten here without a phone. Like I, I would have made it to the office, which is in Multnomah Village, and then that's, that's not that helpful. So our phones are super important, and that's just another way that we try to connect our participants with, with intergenerational volunteers, but also just maybe even connecting with their families or whomever. So these are some stats for our program overall. We serve anyone who's 60 years or older, that's pretty much our only qual, not pretty much, that is our only qualification for our services. Of the participants that we serve, 58% earn less than $20,000 a year. Not very much. I don't know if you know how much you make, but it's probably more than $20,000 a year. It's not very much to live on. Majority of our folks live alone, a great deal of them are women, and 29% are over 80, 80 years old, and that's actually, that's used much larger than the actual population in the tri-county area. 24 identify as BIPOC, and then 16% are veterans. So we have, we serve Multnomah, Washington and Clark County, up in Washington, and that's where we have our home meal delivery, congregate dining, which is literally folks coming in for lunch, having a meal. A lot of times people do that just for the social aspect, like they have their table, that's where they sit, they go there every week on their day, don't sit in their seat. It's a thing, it's very, it's great. Just last year, we served over 1.4 million meals, and that was to more than 11,000 individuals. Our central kitchen in Multnomah Village prepares about 6,000 meals daily, which is just, they are a machine down there, it's amazing. We are mostly volunteer-run, with just over 28,000, or 2,800 volunteers last year, and as I mentioned, these are some of our other programs, the Friendly Chats program, our pets program, so we help to connect folks with veterinarians, low-cost veterinarians, there's a mobile vet that we partner with, some folks just need pet food, and we'll have people who are, places that'll donate pet food, and we're able to get those to our participants. Talk about medically tailored meals, and then if, for whatever reason, you're out in Vancouver, we have a diner. I, I don't know your life, but maybe you're out there. What's nice about that is for older adults that are enrolled in our program, they can have a meal, and so that way they can eat with their families and they don't have to, they can have a meal with their families, but don't have to worry about the financial aspect of it. And then the number that we use is $10.50 cost per meal, and that includes our social supports as well. So, like people who do the Friendly Chats program, they are already doing medically, are already doing meal delivery or congregate dining, so they're often getting, they're often getting multiple services. One Need a Pool! So for our home meal delivery, out here, we serve 78 folks, and over 31% of them were over the age of 80, which is, again, larger than the average, that's the national average, the areas that average, and are... the age of 80, which is again, larger than the average. That's the national average, the areas' average and ours. And then of the 178 congregate folks, over 29% over the age of 80. So, skews really, it skews much older in this area to what that factors do you like. I just like numbers, so I pulled some numbers for you. And then we had over 11,000 hours of volunteering. Different ways that you can always give, like yes, we gladly accept donations. We do not charge for any of our services, but we do take contribution from some folks and their families would like to support if they can. So they'll often do that, but it is not a requirement. We do employee matching, corporate partnerships. So that's like our fundraisers, like Waterfront Blues Fest, which is coming up in July, and then Donate Dinner, which you may be familiar with. That happens around the tri-county area at primarily new seasons, but we have some other stories sprinkled in there as well. It's a great way to give back and just support. And then we have sponsorships for not only those fundraisers, but also for like, we do culturally specific events. So like Lunar New Year, we do a Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, that sort of thing. Another great way to give back. I'm happy to write your proposal if you want to. And then of course, and then we also accept non-monetary donations. So like vehicles, Wheels for Meals program, that sort of thing. Always asking for volunteers. We always use the support. So, we do congregate dining in Tuolumne Sundays and Thursdays. Meal delivery is Monday through Thursdays. We get Fridays off, yay. And then the Friendly Chats. With Friendly Chats, it's a little bit more flexible because folks can just kind of call on their own schedule. You probably shouldn't call like on Saturday night at 8:00 PM, but in general, you can call folks, you know, on your own schedule. And with that, a lot of times, people like to call the same folks. They call the same people over and over and they really build us connections and have those lasting, lasting friendships that they get to build on. Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Any questions?
Questions for Bee. It's President Pratt.
Well, it's not a question, but I, I'm so grateful that you guys added that technology training for seniors because so many things, you know, a lot of, when you get older, you go to the doctor a lot more and a lot of things are online now and it's very confusing for people, so.
And it's not even that it's necessarily hard for them. Sometimes it's just intimidating and they just need a folk to be like, this is how you navigate.
It's just something new and you just need someone to spend a couple minutes with you to learn it. So that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's been super helpful.
Other questions? Councilor Brooks.
Thanks for your presentation. It was really informative. My question, the first time I learned about Meals on Wheels was when I was in college and there was, my landlord lived downstairs from me and he would deliver Meals on Wheels with his wife. And I was just curious how the different Meals on Wheels organizations interrelate with each other.
So there, Meals on Wheels America is the big organization and you can choose to be a member or not. We are a member of them, but with that, each has like a franchise, not the best terminology, but to think of it that way, of how they operate and what they do. Like for instance, we do four days a week. One of the things that due to this pandemic, instead of delivering seven days a week, we started delivering one day a week. If a person needs it more often, they can get it. But that way, someone doesn't need to be at home. Like, yes, a lot of our folks are home out, but sometimes they aren't and they have lives and they can't, they don't want to wait around for a meal. So it gives you a lot, there's flexibility in how your model operates.
Nice. And I'm sure that there's added wisdom from sharing between all the different chapters or whatever.
Yes. I have not gotten the chance to go, but oftentimes we'll go and visit other Meals on Wheels, just to see how they operate, see what they do. And it has informed some of our programming, definitely.
Thank you very much. Great organization.
I'm telling you, we're handling it without Ber. I just have, well, one, maybe two questions. As far as the Tuesdays and Thursdays, any possibility or is there demand for additional days in Tualton? Doesn't Tiger have more than the two days?
No. So we did add a third day to a lot of our sites, just based on the way that Tualton operates. We're sticking, it just, we're sticking with the two days because they share a manager with Beaverton. Yes. So that's, that's why that's still there.
I was just wondering for the folks, again, the social part of it, that additional day may make a big difference?
Typically, they go to a different site. Because, and that is one thing.
I know a lot of folks end up going to Tiger and stuff like that.
Yeah, so it is intentional. Tiger does open Monday, Wednesday. Yeah, Monday, Wednesday is Tiger, Tuesday, Thursday in Tualton. And it gets, and folks will bounce around. Like they, they're getting it. Do not worry.
Like pre-COVID, it was four days a week here, wasn't it?
Changed models, reevaluated, but still being able to, if nothing else, getting those home delivered meals out.
That's what I was gonna say. So with the lack of congregate, you can always get it delivered. Alright, any other questions? Well, thank you for coming out tonight, Bee.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Alright. That brings us to general business. Item number one is consideration of the council committee on advisory appointments recommendations. Councilors Pratt, Reyes, and Sacco.
Okay. This is my, so I just want to say, like always, we always have wonderful people that come in and we get to interview them from our community, get to talk to them one-on-one, ask questions, they ask questions. And it's always so much, it's just so great to see our, the great talent we have in our community. And so I'm gonna, with Councilor Sacco, Councilor Pratt, we both, all three of us ask, we interact with them. And then to me, it's always, I always end up, it's hard to choose and pick someone. I mean, because everyone is so qualified and everyone has the heart to serve and do something within the community. So I, first of all, want to thank everyone that applies and they, and they come and they meet with us and we just get, you allow us to get to know you. So thank you very much for that. And with that, I'm gonna let my fellow counselors talk about the individuals that we interview and we have, that will start a new term.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to mention real quick that we had, we had two folks in committees, three folks actually here tonight, two spoke. And so these, these individuals are very active in our community as well. So one of the individuals up for recommendation also spoke tonight, but Emma Gray for the Parks Advisory Committee.
Gosh. Dong Mai Lin for Architectural Revere Board to fill the engineering spot. Very exciting. And then I'm apologizing in advance. This is a Greek name and it's Teddy Sekarnides. I'm close. Anyway, I apologize Teddy for our Budget Advisory Committee and this is a student.
Yeah, young student in the budget committee, so.
So we, we recommend, recommend these appointments for the advisory committees. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the recommendations of the council committee on advisory appointments. Any discussions on those motions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Item number two, Resolution 5870-25, amending the contract for the hydro turbine project. Nick.
Hey, Mayor Council. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Clicker and we are good. Okay. Before I begin, I want to apologize for the short notice getting this on the agenda and thank you all for accommodating. There's a number of moving parts with this project. The engineering, the external funding.
No pun there, right?
Yeah, that's fair. And we didn't have a lot of notice, right, when I got the final deliverables. And with the first meeting in March canceled, that would have put us out a month, which would potentially delay the deliverables and the construction. So, thank you for accommodating. I really appreciate that. Okay, so to begin, I thought it'd be good to just revisit what the project is, what the InPipe turbine is. InPipe is the company and the technology. Outside this facility here, at the corner of Herman and 108th, we have a valve in our water system that breaks pressure, reduces pressure, to make sure that internal faucets and fixtures don't get damaged by having too much water pressure in the system. We have those all over because our system is majority fed by gravity from Mount Hood, which is really cool and unique to our system. And it offers the opportunity for us to bypass the existing valve, which currently just reduces pressure into spent energy, heat, and it's dissipated into a little carve-out in a pipe. Put this new valve in and when it's reducing the pressure, it's actually capturing that energy in a turbine and that energy can be generated to power buildings or be put back into the grid. So this is the first site that we've looked at. It's gonna be the highest production site and we're well underway. A quick update on the status, because this has been in flow for a while. So in June of '24, you all approved our original contract for about $690,000 for the construction of this turbine. And we immediately began design, engaging our partners, PGE, seeking external funding and kind of getting all the pieces together. So currently, right now, where it sits, we've had 60% design complete. So we're nearly done. The last 40% goes pretty quick. And we've secured about $575,000 to date and we're expecting 100, or 852, excuse me, total. So been pretty successful on that front as well. And during the same time, we undertook a kind of a parallel path to look at an additional feasibility analysis, a microgrid feasibility analysis, which was basically staff exploring with an engineering firm, Portland General Electric and the InPipe folks, how we can maximize the benefit of this product in terms of finances, in terms of energy generation and what just, what PGE needs and what's out there. That last piece is what's driving the proposed change request this evening that I'm here to speak with you about. So, the original design under the original contract is shown on the screen. Basically, it's just the minimal amount of work possible to get the installation complete. So everything is in the right-of-way on the public side of the building out here, as close as it can be to the PGE and water infrastructure. Simple, as cheap as possible and gets the project accomplished. One of the things when we did our feasibility analysis and looking at future flexibility, ways we could harness the energy, have some flexibility around what we do with it and future expansion, we came up with an alternative alignment that gives us some different benefits. So, as you'll see here, what it really does is it moves the majority of the infrastructure back out to behind the B building here. So, internal to the site, at a centralized location. We've already got some of our key electricity infrastructure back there. That's where our diesel generator is that powers these two buildings when the power goes down. And the solar array is on the B building, so that kind of brain is located out there. So just from all the feasibility, we did a site walk with all of our partners. That was like a really good central location to move to. This would also, so the main differences, larger service provides a little bit of flexibility. There's gonna be more underground work, obviously, because distance is greater, but it's gonna give us some more flexibility. So, tangible benefits, right? We expect electricity use at this site to grow, whether it be through EV fleet transition or through electrification of some of our natural gas assets. You know, we have our climate action plant and our decarbonization goals. We expect electricity to increase as we pursue those. This new, larger service and a centralized location gives us a good position for that in the future. This gives us the most flexibility with what we do with the InPipe energy. So currently, we're gonna net meter it. It's similar to what you do at your house if you put on solar. The energy doesn't actually feed any of these facilities. It goes directly back into the PGE grid. PGE gives us a one-for-one credit for the energy generated, so it just offsets our bill. We could, in the future, imagine an alignment or an installation where it directly feeds these buildings. So in the instance of a power outage, we could be powered from the InPipe turbine rather than subject to the grid disruptions. This location provides a lot more flexibility if we wanted to pursue that in the future. It does have increased security. The site is secure. It's got a fence. It's got motion sensors. Moving it internal, the transformer and some of the equipment, while the tampering and damage risk is low, it improves that. And then, you know, that central location begins to position us if we wanted to put more renewable energy generation on site, if we wanted to pursue batteries. I mean, these things are not things that we've spent a lot of time thinking about, but conceptually, they could be down the road in five, 10, 15 years. This really positions us well for that when those decisions come, whoever may be making them. So, cost, right? That's the, that's the big one. So, original contract was for just over $690,000. The proposed change order is $230,000 if it were accepted. A little bit of that is engineering. We needed, we would need to do some re-engineering just on the alignment. The majority of that is the underground cost to just trench back from the InPipe and from the PGE grid to that central location. Brings us to a new contract total of $920,000. The part I want to kind of emphasize for y'all is when we originally came to you with this proposed contract, we had been banking on external funding. And so we spoke to you about a maximum out-of-pocket for the city and a payback period, a return on investment for the cost savings of energy essentially paying for the project. What we had committed to at that time, $214,000 as a max out-of-pocket for the city with a seven-year or better payback period. We've, we've achieved that and then some. We've been much more successful in the external funding than I had anticipated. My team has done an excellent job working with all of our state agencies, public utilities, PUC, Energy Trust. I mean, everyone has really come together and helped us make this come together. So even with the change order, if it were accepted, we're looking at about $65,000 out-of-pocket for the city with about a four and a half, 4.4-year payback period. If we were to not pursue the change order, we would technically be overfunded, so we'd probably leave a little bit of that external funding on the table, but the out-of-pocket to the city would probably remain similar because we have some minimum commitments that the city has to put some funds in to get the external funding. But the point of it is, we hit, we hit the milestone even with the new proposed change order. So with that, the resolution on the screen is the action in front of you this evening. I'm happy to field any questions or comments you may have and thank you for letting me be here.
Questions for Nick. Councilor Brooks and Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. I'm glad that we're doing better than anticipated. Four-point whatever compared to seven is like, pretty amazing, almost half.
Thank you.
When we move it towards, inside the, I mean, I like the idea for security especially, but you said there's additional uses. And so I'm just curious, like what kind of additional uses might those be? And then I also just wonder, like after going to that battery plant place that's right here in Tualton, if we've had those conversations with that company at all?
Yeah. So, the future flexibility is, is something I'm still wrapping my head around because I'm not an expert in this, but it, it really allows us to directly power the facilities. It allows us to directly charge our fleet potentially. It allows us to add battery storage, additional solar PRV array. You know, there's different methods with how you can sell energy back to PGE. We are gonna generate some excess energy here. Right now, that's gonna be donated to their low-income assistance program. If we were to change the way it's connected to the grid, we could potentially sell that back. It would be a very reduced rate, but there's a monetary opportunity there. So, those conversations are all in very early stages, but one thing that was clear is, this alignment allows us the greatest opportunity to do all of that, whatever that may look like, whatever we decide is right for us. We have had conversations around battery storage, really just exploring what PGE offers in terms of incentives and what PGE wants. PGE is really interested in getting battery storage out throughout the territory as a way to peak shave essentially. So there's storage dispersed across the region and when demands are high, rather than get that text that says, "Please turn down your AC", they could kind of bank off of some of these private batteries to help meet those demands. Those programs are all currently being redone and are gonna go to the PUC sometime in 2025 and they're gonna have new rates and new incentives and all of that. I am waiting to see what that looks like because I suspect there'll be more in our favor. So we haven't spoken to the, the company directly located here, but we've had some conversations around it and we're really waiting to just see what the climate shifts into to see if it's opportunistic.
And then can I ask just a bigger, bigger question? Like, how did we, did we just happen to find this? Because somebody was having a conversation? The uses, what they could be in more developed conversation around this? If we had somebody that was coordinating this and helping you guys, would that be, make it easier for you?
Yeah. Extra capacity is always welcome. It's a challenge. I mean, we've moved it slow, but we've moved it successfully, right? But I'll always welcome help, helping hands, make things go faster. This came across my desk. It was, so they installed a similar setup like this at the Hillsborough Hop Stadium with the City of Hillsborough and the Hops and it was in PG and it was like a pilot program. It was the first one in the region. And then they started doing some cold emails around and Terrence Leahy, our water manager, forwarded it to me and said, "I don't know about this. What do you think?" And so we met with their, their founder out at the Hillsborough site with the city and kind of gave, gave us an overview of that. And just super interested, right? We have a ton of these pressure-reducing valves. Not all water systems do, so it's a really cool opportunity for us. We did an analysis of all of our pressure-reducing valves. This was the most productive, so we're starting here, but we have eight. But we have eight other sites identified that are potentials. The challenge is the current alignment with the net metering, right? We have to have it on a site where we use energy. If it's not located on a site where we don't use the energy, we're just donating all the excess energy, and it doesn't help pay for the project. So we've had conversations with PG about how to solve for that problem, right? There's some PUC rules. There's a bunch of moving parts there. But yeah, there's other opportunity as well, and that's on our radar.
Okay, I really appreciate the information. And I didn't realize that about Terrence, so tell him we said thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Nick, for this.
Yes, sir.
Though I support this program, you know, has there ever been a time where contract actually goes down? It seems that it's a constant that you have to do a change order, not you specifically, but there's always change orders that come into city projects. You know, in the private sector, we have a change order like this. Somebody's getting fired, okay? Now, I support this because I voted for it. But even then, I asked those questions. I think I asked, how often do city contracts get increased on the change orders? I don't, I have not yet seen one. We have a savings of X. It's always more, you know? How come? Though I see you spell out the benefits greatly to us. It gives us greater capacity, and I understand that. Wouldn't that have been known then? Why just now? It's difficult to continue to approve these projects with these kinds of massive change orders. Even though you're saying that the city had originally committed $214,000 that we were going to come up with, you're now telling me that we only have to come up with $64,000? Is that correct? And the rest were external?
Yes, sir.
That's good. That's a really good thing. That's a good thing. It's still a large, it's still a significant change order now. And I get it. It's not your money. It's not my money. It's taxpayers' money. Are we far along in this project? Or this is just getting ready to break ground?
So we're at 60% design. And the council could choose to not authorize this change order, and the project would continue with the original alignment I showed on the first slide for the original amount. So that contract amount has not been exceeded. This is an exploration of further benefits. And that has some additional costs, correct? But that is not required for us to complete the installation of the in-pipe turbine.
Yeah. You know, and I supported this because I like the new technologies. I like where that's going. But this is just an example of what a climate action plan could look like. We're asking for tax dollars to be increased for the climate action plan. But yet, based on our history, I'll see a change order coming on the road. So I don't know. You know, I don't know how I feel about this at this moment, though I support the tool, the technology. But this is still a significant change order.
Councilperson Pratt.
Hi, Nick. I often get frustrated when projects, and I will use the I-5 bridge as an example, and when the costs get cut and then we're building something that doesn't look out to future needs and uses. And I think you've done an excellent job here of not only, well, the security is a big thing, but just looking where $64,000 is even a fairly small money for our city, but that it allows so much more flexibility and use and potential savings over the long run. And I feel that that's good governance. So I really appreciate what you've done here.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Have a motion.
Oh, I thought you were going to do it. Sorry. I will motion that we adopt Resolution 5870-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 5870-25. Any discussions on those motions? Is a roll call a vote? So I'll start with Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez.
No.
Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Councilperson Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's six to one in favor. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Nick. Item number three, review of the 2024 city council priorities. Sherlin.
Well, it's been a while since I've been in front of you three different times. Anyway, thank you, Mayor Bubnik and members of the city council. Later this week, you will meet in your annual advance because we're advancing, not retreating. And with part of that agenda, you will be reviewing highlights from the past year and setting priorities for the future. So in preparation for that time together, we want to give you a combined update on your 2024 priorities. Of course, many of them are not one and done, but will continue to be priorities into the future. So the slide deck in front of you is not in your packet. It was taken from the summary report that is in your packet, starting on page nine. So if you wanted to refer to it, it is in your packet, just not as the PowerPoint. And in addition, the placemat in front of you includes each of the seven priorities along with their stated outcomes. So you can, it's always in front of you every two weeks. So what you see on the PowerPoint is nothing different than what you have in front of you. So I will do the next slide. So priority one, neighborhood engagement, has three outcomes and three specific objectives. So the celebrate investments outcome, I'm excited to say that there continues to be a lot of celebrating neighborhood investments, whether that was the ribbon cutting of the trail under 99W on the hottest day of the year or the upcoming grand opening of the Vets Plaza on Memorial Day. Here in Tuolton, we are excited to celebrate wins. We are still receiving awards for the investments made with the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. Recent awards included the League of Oregon City's Good Governance Award and the Oregon Chapter of American Public Works Association's Project of the Year Award for the $25 million-plus category. The second outcome, continue to build relationships. This is one of our core values here in Tuolton. Building relationships with the community in everything we do is fundamental, and I know it continues to bear fruit. Examples include working with the Tuolatinos, the Pele Group, the Latino Business Network, Tuolton Rotary with cleanup events and the Regatta Run, the VFW, and others for the Memorial Day Event and Tuolton High School. It includes the Community Advisory Committee that several of you were part of with the Transportation System Plan Update and our ongoing work with the community involvement organizations. Presence from departments at community events has helped community connect with our staff doing the work, whether that's at Viva Tuolton, National Night Out, and Pumpkin Regatta. The third outcome there, educate and engage. Again, working with the CIOs and our wonderful boards and committees who meet monthly and do such great work, and you just appointed several more. I would add police department work in this category as well. Much work goes into engaging with the community around parking complaints and other things that the police department gets to deal with joyfully. And our police staff are very skilled at educating and engaging with the neighborhoods. A couple of other specific examples include working with the Orchard Hills neighborhood to address specific concerns in that complex recently and also working with Centro Cultural as they begin offering their services here in Tuolton around the Plambek Gardens project. My final example in this section and the outcomes is our website redesign project, which is on track to launch this spring and will greatly enhance our engagement efforts. Regarding 1.1 Street Trees, progress continues on this item. Ross and Rachel came before you in a work session in September of last year, and then Rachel followed up with additional information just this last month. The goal is to be back in front of you this fiscal year with programmatic alternatives for you to consider. Related, our Parks Maintenance Division has started work on a street tree inventory that fits under this. 1.2, the community involvement organizations. A work session was held last August with the CIOs presenting information to you with some specific requests, including adding some additional funding to the grant program, which is coming forward as part of the budget process, as well as looking at their boundaries and making sure that the boundaries are sized appropriately with additions such as Basalt Creek and the Autumn Sunrise. Finally, neighborhood investment. As mentioned earlier, this continues to be a priority around the city. Some specifics include the Las Casitas Park construction, the Community Development Block Grant in Las Casitas for sidewalks, trees, and ADA ramp work. I would also include our work in the River Park area with a listening session around neighborhood traffic. The neighborhood safety, the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program is also going strong with projects being funded that community members submitted. A lot happening in that priority one. And in priority two, the housing, three outcomes and a number of four specific objectives. So the increased diverse housing options. Understanding that the city's purview is somewhat limited or constrained in this area, there has been progress. Plambek Gardens will be opening in March. The Norwood Apartments project is moving forward with some units in the missing middle category. And we continue to try to take advantage of opportunities for grant funding to look at those options, those policy options. I will jump down to the 2.1 Housing Production Strategy. So the city adopted its housing production strategy in 2021. It is now about midway complete with the city's next required update in '27. So the city has completed several key actions, such as the adoption of the Equitable Housing Finance Plan and the low-income housing property tax exemptions, which you adopted by resolution. I talked to Steve earlier, and the plan is to come back in the spring for an update on the housing production strategy and the progress on that. The housing code, there is work to be done here. We recently received a state grant to update the code to make clear and objective changes to support residential housing development. This was a project that was identified as an action in the housing production strategy. But there's always more to do in the housing code section. Green space. So this was a specific, the language is specific here. I will say that we made some code amendments to memorialize the lot size flexibility in exchange for dedication of green space. If you remember, when the Autumn Sunrise Division project approval came before you, you set and negotiated with them, asking for greater green space in return for lot size flexibility. And we came back, I think, three months later, and you memorialized that in code. So we can follow up on that with any additional housing developments. And then county updates. So Tuolton hosted the housing forum in October, which you were at, and it was super powerful, as you'll remember. It included Washington County and Metro, and follow-up continues on that. And of course, we have all been very engaged with the supportive housing services measure and the Affordable Housing Bond Conversation with Metro and the counties. Under economic development, two specific outcomes and then four actions. So communicate progress on urban renewal areas is an outcome. So we made a fantastic hire with Sid Sen as our new Economic Development and Urban Renewal Manager. He has hit the ground running and will be in front of you the first meeting of April. Actually, it's going to be a Tuolton Development Commission meeting. We haven't had one of those in a while. And so he's going to bring forward a plan of action. He's hired consultant, an urban strategist. We're participating with the University of Oregon Sustainable Cities Year Program, which is a whole cohort who will help us with the downtown Cora specifically. It's very exciting, and he has just caught the vision and is running with it. Under the second outcome, we are strategically looking at ways to do exactly this, to connect people through development, whether that's connecting the new Riverfront Park with the downtown redevelopment or new trails that allow for connections and the Pocket Park next to Plambek Gardens. The updated Transportation System Plan also includes new strategies for connections. Under food carts. So this is definitely on the planning department's work plan, and there are upcoming opportunities to leverage that conversation, whether that's the build-out of development in Basalt Creek, the redevelopment of the core area, or both. This one is definitely alive and coming, although not as fast as I know that you would wish. It's a bit of a chicken and an egg thing with the downtown Cora. Like, you don't want to get a project and then have been, you know, like, unwise about where it goes. So, but we have heard you loud and clear. The Leventon, with everything else that has been on the plate, revisiting the code in order to allow for a greater mix of development in the Leventon area has not yet been tackled. However, development is continuing in the Leventon area, which is what the original outcome was. Communications, as I mentioned, Sid was hired in January and has been working really hard. And like I said, he will be before you the first meeting of April with an update on our two urban renewal areas. And then placemaking. This is felt more like a consideration as we move into discussions of redevelopment, particularly in the downtown area, whether that is wayfinding, art, gathering spaces, and connections. Having a community identity is important as we move forward. Priority four, transportation. No small one. So the outcomes and the actions are the same. So 4.1, we are excited that we're in the home stretch of the Transportation System Plan Update. Several of you were council representatives on the Community Advisory Committee. That group has wrapped up their work, and we are entering the final phase of public engagement. So depending on the feedback we receive, we're on track to present the final TSP to the Planning Commission in May, or April or May, and then with the goal of bringing the plan to council for adoption in May or early June. 4.2 is advocacy. So if you'll recall, in January of 2024, we were thick in the topic of tolling. This action was somewhat specific to that tolling discussion. However, it has broadened, given the fact that tolling was put on pause. I believe that we are in the best position for advocacy that we have ever been in, as long as I have been here in my 18 years, with both the mayor and council president sitting on regional transportation committees that people fight for. It's very prestigious that the City of Tuolton has two members on the Region One Area Committee on Transportation. And a number of you are involved and engaged in really important transportation engagements and activities. Of course, we brought on Thorn Run as our lobbyist this year, giving us a strategic edge as we move forward advocating for Tuolton's interests. The environment. So 5.1, adopt a climate action plan. You adopted the climate action plan last May. And then you adopted a two-year work plan that includes actions that can be taken with existing resources while we stand up the implementation program. Work is underway on a number of actions. We talked in work session about that, as well as looking at the actions on the work plan in terms of prioritization. As we have discussed earlier in work session, there is a lot of work underway. However, having a dedicated staff person to allow us to strategically drive this effort will be an important component of the success of this work. Under parks. So the community being informed on bond projects and residents are prioritized in summer recreation programs. So the Parks Committee, T-Park, serves as the Parks Bond Oversight Committee. They are receiving monthly updates on the progress of the projects. In addition, excuse me, park staff continue to do a great job communicating through social media and other ways the progress on our projects. And I believe that you are all on the distribution list for the updates that come out. This last summer, on that 6.2, this last summer, Tuolton residents were given registration time prior to opening registration up for the general public. However, they went really fast, However, they went really fast, and the, the waiting list ended up being very big again. The team is looking at ways to expand capacity in this area, and I will just point out that this is not a problem that's unique to Tuolton. Childcare and the dearth of childcare, summer camps is a really big problem region-wide and probably in the state and nation. And finally, priority seven, culture and identity. So 7.1, share progress on the Idea Committee work plan. So the Idea Committee co-chairs came before you in December to share their annual report. They are making great strides and are engaging on important topics. And then 7.2, trauma-informed. So training and education to support a trauma-informed organization. The update here is that the police department received a Train the Trainer grant, wherein they have sent a number of their staff through a TERT, Trauma Informed Response Training. TERT.
Yeah.
The last of those trainings will be complete in March, with the plan to roll out the training to the organization, including to the council, soon after that. The main outcome, of course, is to have an organization where we engage with our community in ways that are effective and useful in helping to solve problems, not create them through our interactions. And with that, that's the update. You've done a lot this year.
Questions for Sherilyn. Councilbrooks.
I just, I just want to say thank you to you and to the staff. Like, when you, when we read through these every year, it is so much work, and, you know, we remember, and then we remember the year upon year of building through, so I really appreciate all the work that everybody does and all the highs and lows, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes next, and I'm very enthusiastic about working together and making our next chapter together a really successful, memorable one for our city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Sherilyn. I know, I always so appreciate how you and your team navigate all these differences of opinion and do it such great, so, and you prepare us, and you're planning so well, so thank you so much. Okay? Thank you.
Councilor Reyes.
Yeah, I did all, everything fellow counselors have said. I just, I'm always amazed about the organization and how you plan things and how everyone has a role and how everything comes together. It's really an amazing team, and thank you for your leadership. I know it's you. I know you pick the people and you put them in the right spots, and it's just, it, it just flows really nicely, and to see this, and then it just brings me back when we were talking about this, I was like, oh my gosh, we're fulfilling this, we're completing, that's great. It feels good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just remember, we're meeting Friday and Saturday to be there in time, 8:30?
It's eight o'clock on Friday.
Eight o'clock.
Yep, is the soft spot, soft start. 8:30 is a hard start.
Hard start, yep.
Yes, and then Friday is nine o'clock.
Saturday.
Saturday is nine o'clock.
How much coffee? Do we need to bring her on?
What time is the coffee?
Coffee is available at eight on Friday and nine on Saturday.
Not until eight.
Not until eight.
Up and down.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Sherilyn.
All right.
All right, so we already, we had no items removed from consent. We already did Council Communications. So Council Hillier.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion second for adjournments. If you have a favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Thank you. Good night. Have a very good evening.
Just kidding.